We'll call this meeting to order. Pretty simple agenda, we're gonna discuss bond, possible items that we need to discuss about, get estimates for, what we wanna put in a bond, what we need for the building, start chasing down that information kinda ASAP because we'd like to put this up for town meeting day. So timeline is short. So Terry was, Terry's here tonight, I'd like to hear from him first, unless anybody has something else, but I'd like to hear what you think we need for a bond, what needs to be repaired. I mean, I know we've discussed the white building roof, we obviously have the rest of this roof to deal with, and of course the giant parking lot, that's always an issue. So, but anything else? Oh wait, is Richard coming tonight? Anybody know?
I did not hear that he wasn't.
Some of the things are, our windows need replacing also.
In both buildings or just this one?
Both buildings.
Both building?
The white building, we're leaking some donut windstorm that we added this wing. And, um, I think the flashing and all this, if all these need replaced, or reseal. Our fire doors should be replaced here in the brick building also. They were heating up, they heated up too much, they tend to stick.
So they're not opening properly?
Are you talking all of them or some of them? All of them or some of them?
Uh, all of the ones in the brick building here, all of our windows.
The entire brick building or just this wing?
Mostly just this one here and the principal's office.
Now, the other question I have with that is, are the other doors getting close to being the same problem? So is this something we really should just do all of them?
We should, yeah. Even some of our inside doors, easements, uh, the classroom doors, they're wood and they're starting to break apart in this building and the white building. And they're all fire related doors.
Uh, the exit, the emergency exit door, the bulk buildings or just the brick building?
Actually, yeah, bulk buildings.
Bulk buildings. So all, all emergency exit door? And then you said all the wood interior doors, classroom doors and whatnot, they need replaced?
Yes.
Some of the metal ones too or just?
Uh, not so much the metal ones.
Metal ones, alright.
They're holding up, yeah.
Back to the windows, you said windows in both buildings? So are you saying all exterior or all windows, basically? What is the issues we're having with them?
They're, uh, all the gases leaking out of there and they're all smoked up and hard to see through and leaking out.
Plus efficiency wise, we're not getting it.
Yeah.
Operationalize, do they work? Or are they?
They work, but they're getting out.
Cause I know, I know the principal's office window doesn't work very good, we found that out at least there.
More importantly, my door, as Terry mentioned, doesn't open, but you know, they're not worried about me getting out, you know?
Well, we should've got at least one to work, your door or the window, so you have a way out.
You have a way out.
Windows, I will say, have been working better since I started lifting weights again. It was a little embarrassing, yeah, I couldn't close my window.
Uh, so both buildings again?
I know those windows in the white building were an issue from day one.
Yes. Yeah. Weren't good right off the, right off the start.
How many are there, do you know?
What's happening?
How many windows?
I'd have to recount.
That's a lot.
Yeah. The white building is a lot, cause each classroom has a stack of, I think six. And then there's four per floor, so six times four, twenty-four, forty-eight windows. Just the white building and then just this room, we got two, and then over there, I can see a bunch, so a lot of windows. And they're not your normal little windows either, they're all huge. Now, when we replace windows, do we have to, do we have to go to like a safety glass or bulletproof glass? Or is there any requirements as far as what we put in for windows?
What about tinting?
Not that I'm aware of, I don't, I don't think there's a school, I may be wrong, but I don't think there are any schools that has bulletproof glass in their, you know, in their entire building. But I don't know if there's a certain type of shatter proof, that type of thing, I don't know.
That'd be something to have looking at.
Um, one of the things that, um, I just, our piping, um, piping in our old section of the room has been very, very old and we were wanting to go there when we were putting, putting that new oil, we just said that we should change the piping to put it all up above somehow.
Now, the heating or domestic water?
Heating and domestic water.
Oh, both?
Yes.
Okay. Are we having any problems with our domestic water passing tests and stuff or?
No.
No?
When you say passing test, you're talking about lead content or anything?
You have to test water for any contaminants, copper, lead?
Just test it for lead and copper.
Cause when the pipe's really starting to deteriorate, you'll get, but you know, product of the piping. And just this building?
Yes, yes.
So the, now, they did a big reno on the white building, how long ago was that, ninety, ninety-eight?
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine? So did they update all that stuff then?
I believe they did in that building.
So that building, they were pretty much all set on?
Yes.
Basically went to the outside shell on a lot of it.
Um, I know we skimmed over the parking lot really quick, but I was thinking about that, I was wondering uh, what the board was thinking, direction we should go with that, cause I know we are currently pursuing a grant for stormwater grant. So we're pursuing that, but that's got a very long timeline. Is it something we wanna re-review what we did before? Cause I know, I think I'm going left, well, Richard and I are the ones left from that board that came up with that plan. So I don't know if that's something you guys wanna hear about, or if we wanna pursue that, if we wanna keep pursuing the grants. I, I'm kinda, my personal feeling, I'm sick of chasing the grants because they just keep straying us along and we've been chasing grants now for it seems like two years.
Well, we'll come out of it with a design in the, in the spring. So there's no reason why we have to get a grant to pay for, so I mean, if you're gonna go to vote in March, you may very well be able to move forward, you know, with the project over the summer.
That, I guess that would be my next question, if we do decide to do something with the parking lot, no matter what, can we, um, um, still pursue the grant? So basically say, no matter what, we fix the parking lot, if the grant works out, can we go that route and just save the money that we would get from the grant?
Well, the grant, if they design it, I think we would be eligible for the grant and the turnaround of that would be pretty quick, because this one was. So it would be, there'd be a match, so there might be more of a match. So building that somehow into the, some funds for, um, diverting water so that the parking lot then, you know, cause the grant's not gonna be for the parking lot, it's gonna be to deal with runoff.
As long as what you do with the parking lot doesn't interfere with the plan for the runoff, with the rain gardens or whatever they might be?
Well, that's kinda what I'm thinking, if we plan on paying for it ourselves, you know, and pursue it and then the grant comes through and then they'll pay for part of it and you know, whatnot, then we'll already have the match built in and we'll actually hopefully not spend as much as we were expecting for once, you know, come out ahead. I'm not hopeful, but.
That would be nice.
So we should keep pursuing both options for the parking lot, the grant, and maybe reopen, looking at our original plan. Cause our original plan, what it was, we were gonna regrade the entire parking lot over to the grass area on the far side of this parking lot over here. There was gonna be a catch basin underground, all the water would go in there and then there was a pumping station that was gonna send the water to the other end of our property on the other side of the white building where we already had a pipe, built into the easements going off of our property, going out to ditches when we did the drainage for the white building. We were gonna pump the water to there, pick up that pipe that we've already put in there that's not doing anything, ready for this. Um, and then send the water that way. Now, the, kinda where we fell short last time is we didn't get the neighbors involved enough, so they thought we were just sending the water their way and we weren't gonna do anything with it. We actually met with the, um, uh, Hango's, uh, and they said that there'd be enough fill from all the excavation we do here, we could easily transfer the fill over there, put it all underground, clean, you know, fix some of the wet areas in some of our neighbor's property so that we're not just sending our water down there and causing them a problem. Um, the part the state doesn't like, cause we're sending over the frog pond that drains into the river, which drains into the lake and they don't like the runoff from that. But as far as I know, there was nothing to stop us from doing it. If we were willing to pay for it for ourselves, it's just they weren't willing to help us do that.
But Chris, wasn't there a conversation about that water freezing at some point and ice issues?
If, uh, that's what we're worried about with the water gardens, because the water gardens, we're keeping all the water on site and it has to filter down through the soil and just disperse that way. Well, in a rain situation like we had on Wednesday, we're gonna have standing water. Well, this time of year is not a big deal, a couple hours and goes away. Well, what happens if we have one of our January thaws or February thaws or whatever and we have a lot of snow melt along with rain and then it fills up these water gardens and then that night everything freezes. Now we have ice ponds everywhere and the water's not gonna go anywhere, that's our fear.
It's, one thing that I was told is that we are all nonprofit, you know, public facilities will have to have a water runoff certificate, I'm probably using the wrong language, and that this would set us up, so we're gonna know anyway at the end of the year what the plan is and we can compare it to what it was before, I think that sharing those plans from the previous study or whatever you've had done to the engineers would be, you know, they could probably tell us what would pass and what wouldn't do, so you can make an informed decision.
I think they did, but didn't they review Hango's design and they weren't necessarily in favor of?
They didn't like Hango's, no. They didn't like Hango's because of where we're sending the water.
Right, okay.
Um, and we don't have any, we don't have enough, um, what do they call it, perennial soil on site that we can send all that water to. I mean, I know we have this big area down here, but that's where our septic is, so you can't send it down there. Um, parking lots already can't go there.
I heard David Roddy was like a person.
I've been saying that right along the way, but he keeps saying no.
He's fine.
I hope I kept that made it on camera.
Yeah, exactly. We have talked about, maybe talking with the landowner across the tracks. I mean, yes, we own the Cassidy property, but that's an awful long ways to pump it and it's not really, it's not downhill at all. So we have to pump it the whole way, not to mention, we have to trench across I gate wrecked land. You know, and there's fences and everything else that you have to deal with. So there's a lot of logistics to that, but right over here is a farm field that maybe we can talk to the landowner.
There is a ditch right in there, isn't there?
Yeah, at the other end, probably cause it runs down the same places, I think it does. No, Richard told me it doesn't run over there, but she was here. But I mean, obviously the parking lot's still an issue and I know the town would be happy if we fixed the parking lot.
It's pretty rough driving in here.
Yeah. It's just really, it's a safety hazard too, because of the freezing and ponding we get in winter.
I just wanted to bring up that you do have some asbestos that needs to be abated at some point, you are following your management plan, um, but there are a few small areas that should be addressed if you're gonna do something like a bond. Also keep me in mind that any of these projects that you do that involve disrupting the inside of the building will need to have asbestos testing of any materials that are disturbed, whether there's believed to be asbestos or not. So that's just something else to keep in mind, um, but these areas, and Terry might be able to speak more to that, but I just brought your last three-year reinspection from ATC. And these are the areas, so it's not a lot, there's about twelve hundred square feet. You have, you know, the stage underneath the carpet, you know, twelve by twelve floor tile and mastic that about twenty-eight hundred square feet in the gym and.
I thought the gym was all done.
Not the gym itself, but the stage.
Well, this, this is saying, the stage and the gym, twenty-eight hundred square feet, this was last year.
We tore up the whole.
Twelve by twelve floor tile and associated mastic. And then also carpet mastic in the preschool and computer lab area, I think some of that might've gotten, where's A seven?
That's A seven.
So only half of that was abated, yes.
Yeah, cause there used to be two rooms and now we made it one, right?
So you don't think there's anything in the gym, because Andra, Andra's putting that in your plan?
As far as I know, no.
I was there and we tore the whole thing up. So I'm, I don't understand.
Well, we should definitely make her aware that there's a problem with the management plan.
Unless they're talking about, I don't know, you know, they're talking about the storage rooms there where the basketballs are and stuff, I don't know.
Twelve by twelve floor tile and associated mastic location is the gym, condition is good, twenty-eight hundred square feet. It's Q and M five.
Twenty-eight hundred, that's a whole gym.
Q and M five.
That's what Davis.
Forty-one's gonna be there too, maybe all of it.
Big steps. Well, you might want to reach out to her if the, if the inspection wasn't correct.
It should, but this is stage preschool and five by A seven.
So that's all we have, is the gym stage, A seven, says preschool under carpet, is that that stage?
Of course, we have to assume that anything else that hasn't been tested has to be tested.
Right.
Right, but this would have to actually, I, my recommendation would be to abate this when you do any kind of, that now would be the time to do that.
Then we'd be done with it, yeah. So.
Maybe this Terry, so you can follow up with her, cause we'll wanna get that updated if it's not right, Chris.
So we got doors, windows, parking lot, um.
Piping, asbestos.
Piping, asbestos, roofs. I know the, the white building roof needs to be replaced, not ASAP, but we're starting to lose, yeah, we're starting to lose, it's shingles, so once you start losing some, you're gonna, it's gonna keep happening. Right?
There are stair naps under the wall.
We are leaking now?
Yes.
And then, do we wanna do, while we're doing the roofs, do we wanna finish this roof on this building? I mean, is that something we wanna look into, that way we no longer have to deal with this roof?
I would say, yeah.
Now we're talking about it? Me too, I'm tired of going up there.
Yeah. What is the status of that at this point?
Uh, they started laying the act, as you probably saw, the old gym roof is done.
I was looking at this side this afternoon.
This side they're not doing, because they never tore it apart, so that's staying that old. Um, the other side, um, that's done and then that lower roof, which is above, well, Terry's office and the bathrooms and stuff, that's done, so they're working their way down. Problem is, is it can't rain at all when they're putting it down, so.
Well, it hasn't been a problem until.
Until they started doing this part, yeah. So they're, it's underway, I mean, all the, the tear apart and repairs done, so now it's actually putting the finished roof on. Um, I know we've had a couple leaks in, uh, where they haven't roofed yet, Terry had called me about, but I mean, that's, paper only protects so much, that's why you put actual roofing down.
If people's able to stop that.
So do they consider themselves on schedule, do we consider them on schedule?
For Vermont, yeah, I would say he's on schedule, I mean, roofing Vermont's a nightmare, cause of the weather. You know, with liabilities and everything, you gotta be pretty careful.
I remember what kind of plan he had, I just wondered if he was, where he wanted to be by now.
I'm sure he wants to be done, I, I mean, as we do too. But in, you know, I mean, the weather is what it is, so. And unfortunately, something like that, you know how the weather is, they'll call for rain today, so you have to plan on rain and then it doesn't rain a drop, so you spend all day going, oh, it's not raining, I shouldn't have done it, but you have to plan for what the weather report says.
You just have to plan the same thing, Terry, that if we get good weather, it could, it could be done in about a week.
Yeah. I mean, the fact that he's done all the rebuild, that's big, I mean, no more repair, no more surprises at this point, it's finishing the roof. I mean, that's the part I kinda like about it.
Yeah. Terry have anything more? Do you have anything more? Oh, okay, okay.
We could really use a garage to prep equipment, if that's possible, instead of using those containers.
So eliminate the containers in the storage sheds and do one building? Is that what you think? Look a lot nicer.
Cars, cars, cars are always a shock to work out, so, place to really work on things.
So garage for maintaining and storing equipment? About what size, you mean?
I'm just asking, does the arena have any space available for anything like that, that we'd be able to use or rent, being this right there?
They're actually looking to, they're going, pursuing a grant right now, put up their own garage for storage, so they're busting at the seams as well.
Can we buddy up?
That's worth a question. That's definitely worth a conversation, I don't know, trying to think of the logistics of it. They have more land, so it'd be nice to put it on.
In that corner there? I just, I don't know, thinking.
Yeah, it's worth a conversation. I, they're, they're pursuing a grant right now, so I don't know if they got it or not, but. What about equipment? I know our tractor's kinda hurting.
I've been doing some quotes on tractors.
You can't bond it.
You can't, but you better do probably like a lease or some other kind of borrowing.
Uh, I know Richard had brought up, he'd brought it up to me about AC in the buildings. I know we put the little window ones in the white building. And then just the office areas AC'd in this building, right? Pat, just the office areas AC'd right now in the brick building?
Just the, yeah, just the office area.
So.
So library, that door connecting libraries, close, needs to be closed and, yeah.
Okay, so we would, wow, that's a lot of area to AC.
That's a lot of area to AC for the small amount of time that we have students involved in.
I think at this point, it's still worth a discussion, I don't know, I don't know if it's feasible at any. Cause unfortunately, or fortunately, as you look at it, I find that the summers are getting warmer and longer seems like our school years don't get any shorter, so the time that they're dealing with the heat seems to be more.
It's always a busy.
Yeah.
Just, I think I've mentioned before, but we, we had paid for two air conditioning units, one that was purchased only, it was late in the season and was a warm spell. Teacher health somehow, some, in some ways related, but it was, they had so few to select from, it's undersized, so it's really not set for that room. Another room, we purchased one at a teacher request, all these south facing windows. That is a big one and is, um, built for that size and, and then another teacher was brought in her own. They've all required adaptive window arrangements for exhaust and, or vent or whatever you call it. I, I mean, I don't know what we do, if each teacher just starts one by one saying they want one, it's not a very coordinated effort, so.
He tried my BFA and all, every window was covered in little units.
So I don't, I mean aesthetically, the white building units look terrible, but they work a bit, from the inside, they're effective and it helps, but, but in terms of an equity kind of issue, you've got, you know, two grades being educated comfortably in air conditioning and five grades kinda sweating it out and, um, with respect to this hallway, the most southern facing exposures, um, you know, seven classes that are dealing it with even more, so.
I, I will, there's probably no way to track this, but I'd be curious to see if behaviors are worse during, when it's that hot. I know I get crammed when it's hot, so.
Well, I was gonna say, teacher behavior or student behavior? I know the answer to one of those.
It is tough, I mean, we had that first week of school and, and I, I had to laugh because, you know, we had somebody call and tell us the temperature, wasn't a staff member, but tell us the temperature in the classrooms and express concerns around that and I said, and they said, I want you to make sure that the principal knows how hot it is. And I said, well, yes, I will and he knows how hot it is in those classrooms. It, it is tough and, you know, we've got May and June, it can get pretty warm depending on the spring and then August, September, even October sometimes, it, it will get those, uh, spikes of temperature, but definitely the back to school week, I think.
Probably talking about a couple months where it's, where it's potentially has an impact.
Yep.
But.
It's, yeah.
It's not causing any issues with our summer programs?
I think it is.
Well, that's true, yeah, that's.
Cause now we're pretty much, we're kinda open year round now.
It's, well, it's, it's a good point and, um, that's some, that's some information I could gather. I know that the programs typically run in the morning, so they're probably getting out, although some of our programs have been extended a little bit into the day, but those are more, more activity based and maybe outdoor, which is, I guess, more tolerable when you're in an outdoor activity and it's warm, because you're expected to be warm than a summer activity, but not necessarily expecting to be hot while you're doing a learning activity, so.
Why aren't the air handlers bringing in cooler air at night?
Well, typically they won't at night.
Even in the summer when it's cooler outside, to bring the cool air in?
We, we haven't.
I do that at home, we open all the windows at night, pull all the cool air and first thing tomorrow.
Will they reverse the air handlers, I don't know a lot about it, but they bring the cool air in at night?
Closing lines in the day.
Cause yeah, that's another question, I wonder if we replace their windows and do. Yeah, see, that's another question. I wonder if we replace their windows and do, you know, get low E's uh UV block in the windows, it might help a lot with the sun radiation right through.
Well, the door, go ahead, Terry.
I was just gonna say, it'll definitely help the side over there with the.
Well, having this, you know, the magnetic door opens has helped um keeping those doors open and if there was some type of window technology that was UV blocking, I don't know if that would help on the south facing side. Or not, I'm sure. I got I've gotta believe there's something out there, but that in and of itself, replacing that much area of glass would be a small fortune, I would think.
Oh, yeah, I've. Yeah. Yeah, I. Kinda scared to find out.
Just taking them out would be expensive.
No, we have you do it.
And I think it's the lodge with the white building, I'm not sure, but.
I got it.
I mean, they they have that southeastern exposure. And so arguably, these rooms might even get more. They might not, they get they might get early exposure there, but in terms of uh the length of the exposure is probably greatest right along here.
Yeah. And then that brings up another point with the magnetic uh door catches we put in this building, didn't get put in the white building, so we should finish those.
But we checked on them because of the hallways, things like that, you can't put the magnetic door.
That's right, you told me that. Okay, and then another thing Chris um Palmer talked to me about was the safety safety devices for all these doors too. I mean, if we're replacing the doors, we may as well put the safety devices on them. And or make sure that they can they have the right equipment on them, so we can use safety devices on them. Uh anything else?
Do you have anything more, Terry? I just I have a question. Um we talked, I think, at the last meeting actually about having a building audit.
Uh that I'm gonna get to that as soon as we're done with our ideas. So if we're done with our ideas, we'll move on to that idea. Uh like uh Steve said, last meeting, we talked about the potential of having a building audit. I don't wanna speak for him, but I know Richard's dead set against him. Um I'm not. My issue with him is how expensive they are, cause they're fifteen to twenty thousand, so prices like.
Ten to fifteen.
Ten to fifteen, so ten to fifteen thousand dollars to have somebody come in and tell us what we need to fix, which we just half an hour came up with a almost a page list on our own. Now, the downfall of doing it this way where we do it ourselves, if we miss something, we can't go to bond again for a long time.
Twenty to twenty-five years?
Right. So if we miss something, it's on us, you know. So it's a nice insurance policy. We have somebody come in and if they agree with everything we said, well, good job on us, but if they find something we missed, well, it was probably worth having them do it. So that's another discussion, but it is expensive. And then did did they ever call you back whether we could get it done before town meeting?
They did not, but I called them again, but I just today and I apologize, I should have called them earlier, just to get their chance. Um it is Sheldon used cross consulting and it was about fourteen five or just under fifteen thousand. This is a draft of what they did. It's very comprehensive, it breaks it down quite well, but you also get like site plans and analysis of the roof and just a a true assessment of all aspects of the building. And the architecture and you know, art factors and all that stuff. So I just thought maybe you somebody might like to see what it looks like when you.
How long does it take them to do this?
It would probably, I I think the timeframe would work if it was something the board wanted to do, just from what I know about Sheldon. I came up with a little timeline for bonding um in general and basically your first warning would have to be out by September first. So basically, we have up until that point to gather the information.
What date is this?
This is interesting, Laura.
Sorry.
What was the date you used?
September, I'm sorry, Feb- February first, we would have to.
I thought you said September.
Yeah, no, February, sorry.
Hmm. Sorry, looking at this, I actually have a new feeling about this. They they go very in depth.
It's truly a state of affairs kind of a thing on all aspects of your building.
Photographs and all, just to back themselves up.
I mean, they have something out here, uh just as simple as uh cords are on, you know, on a clock. Cords to ceiling code violation, you know. Broken outlets, damaged outlets. Century cord to ceiling code violations, um lots of rusty railing posts.
I guess after an audit, like they kinda weigh out what's important thing, circle in and clean up, right?
Right.
So is.
But they also give you um information about estimated cost, which is what I like, because you're kinda killing two birds with one stone, so they'll they'll let you know.
There's a lot of value in that, cause to to create an estimate for all this work is. There's a month worth of work right there, just getting all this.
That's worth half of it.
Yeah.
Still cost.
Now, they probably wouldn't help us with, you know, something like the garage remain, you know, cause that's a completely new business.
Probably not, but they're an engineering firm, so they probably could add on something.
Thoughts?
Yeah, I'm one of those who thinks it's wise to make sure all the bases are covered. Um you said earlier, twenty years, you you can't go back. And we have a lot going on here and I think it's very important that we make sure we know exactly what's going on, so that we aren't stuck to the rock and hard place, you know, five years or ten years from now and saying, oh, well, the roof's falling, I don't know where to go, you know.
Uh Richard, we're just started talking about the uh audits, uh whether we wanna have a uh company come in and do an audit on our building to tell us what we need to do, what we don't need to do, that kinda thing. Um we've just spent about forty minutes going over a list of things we need to bu- we feel the buildings need. Uh park them out, white building roof, fire doors, uh all the fire doors on the exterior need to be replaced, all the windows need to be replaced in both buildings. Uh piping for the heat and domestic water in the brick building. Um asbestos abatement eh on the stage in classroom A seven and possibly the gym, but we gotta check into that, we don't think we need to do the gym. Uh replacing the roof on the white building, replace the remaining roof on the brick building. Uh a garage for maintaining and storing equipment, so we can get rid of the storage container in those two little sheds and just have one building AC in the brick building and the white building. Um finish the mag- uh magnet door catches and also do those safety devices that Chris showed you and I. You know.
Yeah.
Get something in place for every single door, so that's done. Uh and then we just started talking about whether to do an audit or not. And Laura brought an example of uh.
Sheldon's?
Sheldon's audit that they had done on their buildings.
Yeah.
And that's where we're at. What are your thoughts on the audit, Terry?
If we couldn't go back, like you said, fifteen or twenty years, it might be a good idea for the town, wouldn't it?
But what 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 else are we gonna miss though? If and what else is it all they're gonna come up? I saw MBU's done, you know, and uh guy comes in, a lot of times, he he went around with the buildings and grounds director and you know, he told them what we needed, you know, and uh some of the stuff we needed, they pulled out. So a- and then after the audit, at MBU, we added things in, like a basketball and a and a net and we added a whole bunch of stuff in after the audit. So is it good, is it good either way?
Well, I don't, I don't think it binds us.
No, if you don't, yeah, it binds us, it binds us up with a lot of money. It binds us up with a lot of money. You know, that's that's my problem.
It's also a lot more if we miss them.
You know, I I don't think we're gonna miss nothing.
One thing that uh I didn't know about having the audit that is uh I think an asset that Laura was telling me is, or us, is they'll also do the estimated costs.
It's in that that Ryan answered that.
The the estimated cost.
Of doing the work. So what they'll do is they'll come in, tell us what the building needs, all the violations and what needs to be updated and everything, and they'll also put the estimated cost in there for doing the work. So by the time they're done, they hand us an audit, tells us what we need and what it's gonna cost.
Rather than us running around getting quotes.
Right. I mean, obviously, there's gonna be some variation once you get the actual contract.
I understand that, but they also also you end up taking things out and putting things back in, you know, I seen this at MBU, you know, where, oh yeah, they gave us the audit, but we didn't follow it all. You know what I'm saying? We didn't, you know, tha- that's my problem, I I it'd be good, are we gonna go this, we're not gonna change nothing after the audit? We're gonna do exactly what they said, we're not gonna put up like different things after the audit? We're not gonna put an addition up after the audit, we're not gonna say, oh wow, we could have had this and that's what I'm saying, we're not, are we gonna add stuff in?
I I think it'd be unreasonable to think we would. I mean, the reason why I say that is because at the time we do the audit, we have this plan. Well, a month out of the road, something breaks and then all of a sudden we're like, oh, wait, we need to fix that. I mean, or the 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 audit says that we need to do A through Z and we can only afford A through R.
Right.
Well, I mean, that means we're gonna have to pick some letters out of there and make it work.
And I agree with you there, but I'm also saying, I'm using MBU because I I seen it, you know. MBU didn't want, okay, MBU, th- there was track in there, th- the fixing of it, putting in the track. Well, they took the track out, we couldn't afford it. But then we added in, wow, we needed a batting cage and and cause we started the gym, we're gonna add more, you know, that's what I'm saying. If we're gonna go without it, we gotta follow the audit, don't don't skip and jump and you you know what I'm saying?
Or just start tuning into the projects too that they suggest.
Yeah.
You're, say we're replacing a wall somewhere or a window or something, there's gonna be added cost, so you pick some kind of a buffer.
Right, right.
Condition.
Right, yeah, yeah, I I understand that, you understand that.
Yeah.
Richard, what happens with, it's actually, it's it's a condition as as an assessment. So they're gonna come in and they're going to, it's like a state of affairs and they're going to assess most, some of the things outside the building that you tell them to assess. So i- if we say we want you to assess the parking lot, the drainage, you know, whatever, outside, the permeable surface, whatever it might be, the pitch of the roof, then that's what they're going to assess outside the building.
Yeah.
So we have to identify those things outside the building for the most part. I mean, I think they're gonna look at general items, but in a case like MBU, it's because someone said, assess our track, we want a new track, and then they chose after that assessment, looking at the cost, that they it was cost prohibitive, and then they added on other things, but I mean, you can still guide this audit to assess certain areas that you feel are important, or say, you know, this is not a priority for us in our audit, we don't want you to assess this area, like if that's the board's prerogative.
So basically, it's a checklist. You get a checklist.
Right. I mean, you.
I I just think, from my standpoint of view, I I I don't think we were we were so clinged with it. I I I don't think the board had their hands on it, like like I want.
Okay. So they.
I I hope if we do it here, I hope we have our hands on it, not just one person, not just Terry, or not just Pat, or just Pat and Terry. Or you, I think the board needs to have their hands in it too, and and to know what's going on, you know.
They can decide what's a priority or what they're gonna.
Right, don't, or you know, just a just a certain group, I I think you need to with everybody that's in this room, you've gotta add, and and I think at MBU, eh the the whole the whole pot wasn't involved. You know, I think here, if we're gonna do it, there the nine, the eight of us here, knowing how many's in this room, need to be involved in what's going on.
If there's things on the list that we can do ourselves, we don't have to involve their quota.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, and and that's what I'm saying, we we need to discuss it ourselves where, you know, Pat might have a good thing, or Julie, or or you, Steve, but I think we gotta look at everybody, if we're gonna if we're gonna do this and not just one or two people and oh, that sounds good and.
Yeah, you gotta prioritize it, you're right, because sometimes, especially with an older building, there's a lot of things that might not be up to code anymore and and bonding for absolutely everything in a report might be prohibitive. You know, so you probably have to pick, well, what are the biggest items that we need help with, big ticket things, what are the most serious issues?
No individual objectives.
Right, yeah, so we'll have to.
I agree.
We'll have to look it all over and make decisions.
So should we almost prioritize our list now? Oh well, first, I guess we should decide if we're gonna do an audit. And then if we do decide that, would we wanna just prioritize this list we have here, so when we hand it to whoever does the audit, we can say, well, this is our priority ones and then priority twos and whatever.
Yeah. I think so.
Okay. So what's everybody's opinion on the audit? Well, should we vote on it? I need a motion, but.
Well, first, let's talk about where that money's coming from.
Well, that's a big one.
Yeah, that's that's another thing.
That's a good question.
Our our.
I don't have any magic money.
Our capital reserve is all used up, right?
Yes.
Um that's.
We're the contributing factor right there to whether you do an audit or not.
Yeah.
I love cricket.
I mean, truly, it would be charged to your facility, it would be charged to your facility line right now.
And and what's our facility line though?
What's that like?
Yeah.
Could it support an audit?
Uh no, there's there's not an extra fifteen thousand dollars in there that I'm aware of that we budgeted for an audit, it would have to come from other places.
Yeah, there there you go.
We would have to try to find that money without within the rest of the budget.
So so let me ask this, would it be be, really can't, but would it be better to uh put that fifteen thousand? You tell me, the audit's great, so would it be great enough to put that fifteen thousand in the budget for March? And so in July, we do it then, a- and we go out a year, we go out an extra year.
Talking about the first warning of February one.
Well, what Rick was saying is that we just, we put a year into our timeline. And my only issue with that is the uh impending Act forty-six decisions. We wait a year, may not be our decision anymore.
Right.
At least at this point, it's still the town high gates decision.
Will it, well, let me ask this, will it still be in March?
What?
Town of Highgate's decision.
Yes.
In March, but then if you were to get the money for an audit in March, let's say there's no nothing stopping, you know, and everything moves forward, which I don't know which way that'll go, um but it's possible that in March, you have a vote that's giving you some money for an audit and you were saying July one you start, then if things would be merged July one, so it wouldn't just be the voters of Highgate voting on a bond. So I think that's part of the pressure.
Right.
Um you know, if everything merges for July one, then you would have had your bond. And then uh you'd you'd be able to go forward and build your school, uh you know, fix the roof and and do all of that.
I really hate out of given options.
There's other, there's other schools doing the same thing, of course, you know, because it's put some pressure on those decisions.
So I think the first thing that we need to know is if we can squeeze fifteen thousand dollars out of the budget. Otherwise, we can't make a decision on the audit.
That's up to the board. At this point in time, where we are with the year and the finances, that would be up to the board if they wanted to reallocate that money. Do I think that you could find it at this point in time? Yes, but I don't know what's gonna happen. You know, do students move in, your special assessment goes to the roof, I mean, there's a, but right now, but that would be up to the board if that's what they thought was the priority, you know, to be somewhere else.
Right.
So we're rolling the, we're, sorry, we're rolling the dice, basically, we're hoping that everything stays the way it is and we might be able to eke it out by the end of the year, or because it, I, I don't really wanna wait till March to put it in the budget, even though that, that sounds like a better plan,
Right.
but given the, what's coming, I, I don't wanna wait. I mean, i- if, if that wasn't coming down the pike, I agree a hundred percent, wait till March and then proceed that way, but.
Well, that's why I was saying, if we can eat the fifteen grand out at this point in time, to go forward with an audit and put everything in motion, now is the better time to do it.
Once, sorry.
That's all right.
I was just wondering, I mean, it, once we get the approval and we get the bond, does Act forty-six have an effect on that?
No.
They, they inherit the bond.
Yeah, all the communities inherit each other's equity and each other's debt.
Okay.
So it would be, it, I, I mean, the real difference is it's harder to have a vote of the larger communities to say, you know, especially right away.
Yeah.
Um, hi, Swanton needs a new wing and.
Yeah, I know, that's.
Yeah, that's the hardest thing to do.
That's an argument from day one, that, you know, who, who wins in the decision.
Right, so I think it's a good time to, to do, you know, bonds now if you can.
Then the other thing is there's, we have a couple of issues that we, we gotta stop putting off, the parking lots, one of them.
Yep.
The now leaking white building roof, that's now gonna be the new roof discussion we have, so we need to do something about that ASAP, in my opinion, so we don't have another twelve year incident like we've just.
Well, we did, Highgate, Highgate did try to bond for those items, we, we put forth a bond of three hundred and forty-five thousand on March seventh, twenty seventeen.
Yeah, for the parking lot.
But both, right?
No, just the parking lot. It's hard, it was uh regrading and I ended paving.
Yeah.
Wasn't up the roof?
No.
No.
I think the roof is a new issue.
It's a new old issue.
Yeah.
We, at that time.
Clearly brought to the table.
We, we were trying Band-Aids at that time and then they weren't working, so.
I don't know, I think we need to set ourselves up just in case.
Set ourselves up for.
Get the auditing, get the bond in motion, just in case, either way.
Can it don't.
I mean, it sounds like it's more of a win-win situation, if we get ourselves set up, the bond goes through, we have it in our back pocket. If it doesn't, we're back to square one and either we decide what to do next or somebody else goes, right? Under Act forty-six.
Right, if, if we don't, if we don't have a bond ready for the voters in March, then
Yeah.
what he very well happen is there won't be a bond ready until it's the voters of the combined district
Right.
versus Highgate and we no longer have our local control.
That's what I mean. Right.
Yeah, because now, we, we still have a vote on it, but so does Swanton's theoretically, so frankly.
And Sheldon's probably got issues and Swanton's got issues and whose are their own issues.
Yeah, they're, yeah.
And we don't even know if Sheldon gonna be part of their district anymore.
Right, I mean, yeah.
So there's a lot of.
They're looking at bonding too.
They're looking, they've, they've all got the same idea.
Right.
Well, it's.
Well, and, and.
So is it the Rodeo run too?
Part, part of it, part of it is the nature of that they've just waited as long as they could, just like you, I was, it's not like this, it's strategic.
Saying, get it set up, at least get it in motion. I think we should try.
Agreed.
Richard.
So.
Yeah.
And, and the fifteen, the fifteen thousand is what Sheldon's, Sheldon's was just under fifteen thousand dollars, I don't know what this one will cost, if, if,
I missed a question, I'm sorry.
if I call and get an estimate, I think it's going to be more than fifteen thousand, that's what I'm worried about, because then I have to follow a, a bid process, a formal bid process, or at least solicit more than one, and I'm not sure how many companies are out there that do this.
Bid process.
Or take something.
Narrow the scope.
Then we take the, something off the list.
No, no, the, um, to, to provide the audit, the assessment.
No, she's talking about the audit.
The audit, I know, but, but you said we have to point to auditors.
Well, you can identify areas that you want them to evaluate, above and beyond their normal, their normal assessment, I think that's what happened. I don't, I'm not, wasn't involved with MBU, but I think that's where they said, we also have concerns about our track, and that's what you would do, we would, we would say, this is what we think some of the issues are, but they're still gonna come and do their general assessment, yeah.
Okay.
You probably don't need them looking at the parking lot, you already know what that, you know, looks, you already know it's bad, you've already had some.
Right.
That's a big one, right off the list.
Yeah, but I, I.
Yeah, but I don't think they bid by the amount of items they look at, they bid by the size of your property and the amount of time they have to spend here.
No question.
Right.
Yep. Yep.
It's a, and a, probably an hourly rate plus a base charge and.
And some of that, like, I, I think, and again, I'm not positive, but like, something like a track is an add-on, it's, it's separate.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Something like drainage, they're going to evaluate because it can impact the rest of your facility, but something like a track, that, I mean, that's something you would identify, it would be like you identifying, I don't know,
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Also, want, we want to a- abate the, yes, or garage, or we want to abate the asbestos at the same time, so please consider that when you're doing our audit.
A shed. A garage.
Yep.
So we can't make a motion tonight on a dollar amount?
Well, she said she can't, she said she can't exceed a certain amount, right?
For the audit.
Fifteen thousand is the threshold before I have to follow a formal bid process, or I have to solicit at least three bids.
So, right, so it can, it could be more, just like.
Well, don't we make the motion not to exceed?
You could, I'm just, I'm just letting you know that if it does, then I need a kind of contingency plan on that, that what would my next step be?
And we don't meet again till?
Till eleven.
Eleven.
Till eleventh?
I think so.
And also the timeframe is my other concern, I think it's doable, but I, you know, I don't know what these companies have the work lined up either.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. All right, um, we haven't had a motion, so.
Well, I'll, I'll make that motion, not exceed more than fifteen thousand.
What's our contingency plan gonna be? So if it, say it comes back, it's seventeen thousand, or is it gonna do it, or?
Well, I, 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 I think, I, I think we're, we're gonna have, if it comes back, we're gonna have to meet and.
If it exceeds the fifteen thousand dollars, then we need to have.
On the eleventh.
Yeah.
And we re. Not reconvene.
Yeah.
So if we can get the bid before.
Or you can, I was gonna say, or you can authorize me to solicit bids and not for, not follow a formal RFP plat- process, but that still satisfies the requirement, and I can try and find other companies that will provide estimates for the next meeting, so we at least would have them.
See, I like that, cause that, we'll keep the ball rolling that way, yeah.
So, so, so you're saying we come back on the eleventh, and if she can't get the fifteen, she'll get bids and she'll bring the bids to us in? But, yeah, 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 that, that sounds good.
We'll try, yeah.
Yeah. All right, so the motion is uh to pursue having a, an assessment audit, not to exceed fifteen thousand, if it does, to do an informal bid process. Uh, Richard's the first, me the second, Ryan's the second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Yeah, I do have a discussion. You said, I'm sorry, I'm thinking about it as you're saying that, you, the way the motion reads is not to exceed fifteen thousand, where she gets bids at seventeen?
No, of course.
Then we, we're gonna reconvene on the other end.
We're reconvene, okay, I just wanna make sure that that's, okay, and uh, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Any other discussion?
We don't fiddle the bird back.
Okay, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries five zero.
Yeah, assuming this is something you do want me to do in the one.
Uh.
It's fine, whoever you want to do this is fine.
Yeah, I would say Laura. So Laura to pursue a, an assessment audit. Uh, how about, uh, any information on bonds themselves, I guess, a little education for that?
Um, yes, so.
I know it's pretty vague, we don't actually have a dollar amount yet, but.
Right, but I mean, we have what we proposed last time as a, um, kind of a, at least who's the thought, if I can find it. Basically, this would be the timeframe, and I didn't print more of them, I'm sorry, but basically, um, I'll just read it with you, um, we would need to do our first warning by February first, we'd have to have informational meeting, um, which would probably be the same as your budget informational meeting somewhere around the twenty-fifth of February. Um, you have to print your, um, um, your notice or your warning three times in the same paper on the same day of the week and in the same section of the paper. Um, so that would happen throughout February, um, then you'd go on town meeting day, which is March fifth, and then I, then I work with the bond council and, and file the paperwork after that, is what happens. The application for bond, for the Vermont Bond Bank is actually May fourth, the deadline is May fourth this year, um, and then we would find out, or realize our allocation in mid-June, and then, um, the bonds are distributed in July.
So we would be able to start until July, if, assuming everything goes through, we couldn't start construction until July?
Right now. Well, you could, if we had money, we could pay and get reimbursed from the bond team, so we, that can happen for a few weeks if we needed to.
Yeah, I get you. Okay.
Um, right now, the rates, um, Vermont Bond Bank has a new director, um, the rates as of seven nineteen on a ten-year bond was two point six nine percent, twenty-year was three point four eight, twenty-five years was three point five one. Last proposal that we received on a three hundred and forty-five thousand dollar bond, this was at two and a half percent for ten years, so it's, interest rates are up a little bit right now on the series, um, would be, the payment was going to be about a little, little less than thirty-five thousand dollars a year. Your first payment is typically just interest for the first year, um, and then you get your principal payments after that. Other than that, I'm not sure what else.
So our, it was thirty-five thousand on three hundred and fifty thousand, borrow it right?
Three hundred and forty-five, yeah.
Three hundred and forty-five.
Mm-hmm. And that was only a ten-year, so, you know, if, if you were looking to address the, this kinds of, these kinds of items, I'm thinking you're probably going for a twenty-year.
And that's why it would be twenty years before we can do another bond, cause we're already in a bond for twenty years, okay.
Right. Well, neither, I don't, typically, you don't just stop paying on one bond and then you can do another bond, which is, it can happen, but.
Yeah, start another one, yeah.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if that answers your questions, that's the information I have right now, um.
So the, so the, Laura, the first warning I have is February first, and then we go from second warning.
Well, you can just skip out.
Yeah, thank you.
Those are estimates right now, but there's not a lot of flexibility, so.
Okay.
So I'd say for our next meeting, uh, a topic's definitely gonna be this bond issue. Just give us a chance to digest some of this and also give Laura a chance to pursue a assessment audit. Cause then the other concern is would they be able to complete it in our timeframe, so we could use the information they bring. I mean, it's, they can't give it to us February fir-, uh, January thirty-first and expect us to, you know, make a decision, so.
No, realistically, you would want it before the end of the year.
Exactly.
So you'd have time to work with, I mean, there's still going to be information you'll wanna work with contractors on, or whoever, vendors to try to gather, I mean, these are, these are generalities, so.
You don't always forgive me, cause I've been around bonds, but not in the middle of them. But sometimes you'll do a bond and you do some of it one year and some of it the next year, it's not, yeah, depending on the scope of it, yeah.
Exactly, yeah, you can, the work, the actual work, yeah.
Because usually, you have to, you can only tear the school apart for so many months and.
So much.
Yeah, that's why MBU's doing theirs.
Right, well, we'll try and get as much done as we can, but I know City School, it was closed for three summers because they had to do part one and part two and go from there, so.
Yeah.
Something to this scale, you'd probably be.
Right, you might be doing one.
Oh yeah, I couldn't imagine how you'd do that all during the summer.
And I'm not sure if you, this is, you know, some of this may involve something like a clerk on the work, on the works too, or you're hiring someone to manage these projects over the summer.
Right. Yeah.
So we did with the white, we did the white building, we did the white.
Yep.
Thanks for straightening me out on that, cause I started to think of all of that gonna be done in a single
Yeah.
school year, it seemed a little much to me.
But the payback difference doesn't make a, it, it's splitting it across one, two, or even maybe three years, the payback is no different as far, as far as the paid schedule.
Right.
Yeah, but you're allocating those funds, the bond bank is allocating those funds and selling those bonds based on what you think you're going to need.
Yeah.
So the money is just sitting somewhere until we use it, right? Whether we use it all one summer or use it over three summers, okay.
That's, it, it, um, it works kind of on a reimbursement, so I request, or I request funds as I need them to pay for things. But one of the cool things about the bond bank is they, they, they keep reselling bonds and refinancing, so to speak, so typically, what happens is you get a bond bank savings allocation, so maybe even fifteen years from now, they've sold the bonds and, and made more money off of their bond, so to speak, then the revenue comes to the school districts who borrow, so that's kind of a cool thing.
Yeah. It's a gamble.
Doesn't happen to the bank.
Right. Uh, that's all I have for the bond, anybody else has, then to add? Steve?
No.
You sure?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, so, uh, future meeting dates, uh, next.
Before you put one.
Uh, Steve, I mean.
I don't know, I got one that Heather, uh, uh, of H and B's Basset came and saw me, and the M- MBU, the advisory board wants to put a sign over on the Cassidy Field. And, but they need a, a signature from the board for a permit. And, uh.
Is this the same sign we already said that they put?
Yes, yes.
But they need me to sign a permit?
Well, the town does, it's no cost, but the, it's a town, let's look at it. It's a town that's asking for it.
So.
How's Heather involved for this?
Well, what's that?
How's Heather involved?
She's on the advisory board, and, and she's the one that's putting the, the sign to get help, get the sign.
So I guess I would entertain a motion to approve me to sign this.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Pretty much agreed to do it anyway, right?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right, opposed? Motion carries five zero. That's what I was looking for, Steve.
Well, what's that?
I said there's no fine print, right?
Is this the sign they're gonna put up?
Yeah, I think so, yeah, yeah.
I'll pass, as soon as I sign it, I'll pass it around, so. Okay, on to, uh, future meeting dates, Highgate, next board meeting is, uh, the eleventh, six thirty here. The next, uh, Franklin Northwest SU board meeting is October third, it's six thirty at Swanton School Library.
I may bring something up, um, I, I know Steve mentioned it way back, he, he wouldn't wanna take my place on the, cause I, I got everything going on right now.
Take your place.
He sat, uh, on the Franklin, uh, supervisory board. I know you mentioned it, that's.
Oh, but I did.
I've done it before, what's, what's your term on that?
Well, it's just till March.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're on me.
Okay.
So Steve is now, now the new SU Highgate representatives, myself, Ryan, and Steve. Can I go on to board meeting, anybody else have something to add? Okay, so the next SU board meeting is October third, it's six thirty at Swanton School Library. Uh, I do see we have executive session for probable, possible legal issues, is that just a carryover, or do we actually have a?
I don't think we have one.
I think we have a number just because.
Yeah, it's usually generic, so. In that case, we are all done, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Uh, any discussion? Uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And we are, yeah, we're adjourning at seven fifty-three.